Good evening, City Councilors, staff, residents, and guests, and welcome to Cedar Falls City Hall. I'm Mayor Rob Green, and as the Presiding Official, I now call this regular council meeting to order. Madam Clerk, may please conduct a roll call.
Miller?
Here.
DeBoer?
Here.
Cruz?
Here.
Harding?
Here.
Dara?
Here.
Sires?
Here.
All members present, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and first item on the agenda will be approval of minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Are there any agenda revisions, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, item 20 on the resolution calendar is being removed. That's item 20 on the resolution calendar.
Thank you. Before we move forward with our special order business tonight, I do have one statement that I would like to make, and this will be an annual, just a repeat that I give because it's such an important topic. Today, I issued to city staff my non-retaliation statement and ombudsman contact, and in that I say, "Good governance requires accountability, transparency, and mutual trust. I am personally committed to ensuring that all employees of the City of Cedar Falls comply with both the letter and spirit of Iowa law, the city's code of ordinances, and the general principles of integrity and professionalism. Such integrity includes the timely reporting of government practices which may be considered improper. To that end, city employees must feel safe in bringing suspected impropriety to light. You are legally protected from reprisals when reporting improper government activities in good faith. Per Iowa Code 70A, Tech 29, such impropriety includes: a violation of a rule or law, mismanagement, an abuse of authority, a gross waste of funds, or a substantial and specific danger to public safety. In accordance with the Cedar Falls Personnel Manual, if you are aware of an illegal, improper, or questionable activity within city government, and if such disclosure is not prohibited by statute, I expect you to address these concerns to your supervisor, the city administrator, or directly to me as mayor. Should you need advice on how to proceed with your concerns, I encourage you to contact the state ombudsman's office. The ombudsman is authorized to investigate certain government impropriety, and your identity may remain confidential if desired. By earnestly and thoughtfully addressing good-faith employee concerns about potentially questionable or improper practices, we will ensure that the City of Cedar Falls is a true learning organization and a positive vibrant workplace of choice." So with that said, I will move into the special order business for tonight, which is number two on our agenda, "Public Hearing on Proposed Plan Specifications, Form of Contract, and Estimate of Cost for the Downtown Streetscape and Construction Project." And we have a city staff member to address this for us.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. Just a quick update, especially for those that are new to the council. The project for the downtown streetscape and reconstruction involves the removal and replacement of the Main Street Parkade brick pavers from First to Third, while incorporating some updated design and additional streetscaping components. In addition, we'll be doing the reconstruction of the two blocks on Second and Third Streets from Main to Washington Street. As we heard from Jennifer earlier, anytime we do a reconstruction of a roadway, we look at the infrastructure, and we'll touch on that here in a moment as well, but that includes sanitary sewer and water main. The total estimated cost for the construction of the project is $2,481,966. That does include $325,000 of brick pavers which were approved to be purchased at the December 16 council meeting. So those pavers are pre-ordered due to the long lead time. The project will be funded utilizing Tiff Downtown, Community Main Street, Black Hawk County Gaming Grant, and the Cedar Falls Utilities Funding sources. The first slide that you have up here is just a quick, you've seen this before likely, but it shows some of the deterioration of the downtown sidewalks, the pavers. Some of the pavers are chipped and broken and actually starting to become trip hazards on Main Street there. Lack of amenities, and then landscaping protection and consistency is what we're looking for with the updates. Next slide. Right? It worked. So this is the approved Main Street concept, and again, this is the proposed paver layouts as well. You'll also see that we have some new concrete benches. That's what the white components are. We are improving some of the electrical on Main Street, but you can just see here what the council did approve last year as a part of this project. All right, good. The infrastructure improvements, this relates primarily to Second and Third Streets. Does include the replacement of the sanitary sewer as well as the water main. The water main on Third Street is being extended about 40, possibly 80 feet to the east of Main Street to help out the, or get the water to 302 Main Street building. In addition, we are extending some of our subdrain for the storm sewers to make sure that we're getting the water away from the buildings. There is one steam tunnel that was found during the design process, and that is outside the caboose stop on Third. And so we will be eliminating or demolishing the walls on that steam tunnel and then doing some backfill on that. As well, we'll be updating the electrical and relocating some of the light poles, and that update includes the new feeds for the light poles as well as updating and providing some new outlets on both the side streets and Main Streets. And then we have assessed all these trees along Main Street, and some of those trees are not in good condition and will be taken down and replaced with new trees as well. Next slide is a quick construction schedule. We anticipate to receive bids for this project on the 21st and then on January. And February 3, we'll be bringing the low bids to council. But you can see here, I won't go over all the details, but a lot of construction in a short amount of time with the anticipation that we have this project completed by November 15 of 2020. So looking at the schedule here, there will be some overlap between Second and Third Streets' construction being shut down at the same time, and then we're trying to do each side of Main Street at any given point. Answer any other questions you may have.
Okay, no question from council. At this point, I'll backtrack and receive and file proof of publication of notice of hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now to written communications filed with the city clerk. Do we have any, Madam Clerk?
I have no written communications on file, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent, and we have already jumped into oral comments. At that point, is there any from the public who wishes to comment on this project? Sir? And state your name, please, for the record with your answer.
Rick Sharp, 1623 Burt Street. I just have a question for the pavers. Did the application of rock salt kind of wear them out a lot quicker? And if so, would the city be willing to look into getting the proper ice melt to preserve the paver's life?
I think so. Mr. Gaines, could you answer that?
So in our research, we've done actually quite a bit of looking at the pavers. The original pavers that were in the downtown area were constructed of a concrete paver, which the life expectancy of a concrete paver is probably somewhere between the 15 and 25-year mark. I would say that yes, some of the salt did add to the deterioration of the existing pavers, but as we're moving forward, we're looking at the clay paver that will withhold that a little bit more. The salt doesn't affect the clay pavers quite as much, and as you can see, most of the clay pavers that you see in streets are pretty durable. Some of those at times end up lasting over 100 years, so.
Thank you. Any other question? Please. Evening Director Lilly.
Hi, I'm Carol Lilly, Director of Community Main Street in downtown Cedar Falls. And I would just like to, first of all, just mention that, you know, the downtown area is a reflection of the health of a community, and we have a vibrant and very active downtown. So we, from Community Main Street, would like to express our support and our, more importantly, our appreciation for the time and investment that has been spent making sure that downtown continues to be a vibrant place for people to do business and to enjoy the assets of the community. So thank you very much for this investment, hopefully, if things move forward. But I do appreciate, as does the entire downtown community, the importance that you have placed on our downtown area. So thank you very much. We look forward to working closely with city staff throughout the construction project to make sure it's as seamless as possible. So thank you.
And thank you to Community Main Street for all your work on this project as well. Any other comments from public? I'll turn it back to city council. Any comments from councillor? Requires a roll call vote?
I would move approval.
You need a resolution?
Oh, hey, let me go back to that, okay. So this puts us into item three, "Resolution Approving and Adopting the Plan Specifications, Form of Contract, and Estimate of Cost for the Downtown Streetscape and Reconstruction Project." This does require a roll call vote.
Motion to approve.
A second.
Now does it require a roll call vote? This requires a roll call vote.
I'll voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item four is "Public Hearing on Proposed Amendment Number One to the College Hill Urban Renewal Plan." Motion to receive and file proof of publication and notice of hearing.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Written communications filed with the city clerk. Are there any, Madam Clerk?
I have no written communications on file, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, and for this district, we have Mr. Graham to speak to us about this mid.
Thank you, Mayor. What's before council tonight is amendment number one to the College Hill Urban Renewal Plan. This plan was adopted back in 2011. The city council did set the date of hearing on December 2nd, and then we also, following state code requirements, held the consultation meeting with the taxing entities, which would have been the Cedar Falls School District and Black Hawk County on December 10th. What this amendment does is, back in 2011, this plan was adopted prior to the state code requirement requiring urban renewal plans to lay out specific projects and detailed budgets. What this project is doing is updating that into this newer format. All of our other urban renewal plans are under the new format since the 2013 change from the state code. And then also, we're updating it by adding a project or two to the plan. The state code requirement says anytime you're adding plans or changing any budgetary items, it does require the plan amendment which needs approval by city council. One of the main things that we're updating with this plan is the inclusion of the project for the College Hill zoning revision, which is later on in this agenda. So staff is recommending approval of the plan amendment.
Thank you. Council, does anyone wish to comment on the urban renewal plan? I'll turn to the public. Do we have any public comments for tonight? Back to council, and this, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Yep. Requires a roll call vote.
I'll voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next item is item number six on the calendar. And this is "A Public Hearing for Proposed Rezoning from R1 Residence District to C1 Commercial District for Property Located at 4911 University Avenue." Is there a motion to receive and file proof of publication?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Do we have any written communications filed?
I have no written communications on file, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. For oral comments, we have... Who up tonight?
Mayor, I will take care of that one tonight.
Okay, thank you. Any on that listed here?
So this property's been used as a residential property since about 2003 by the current owner, which is Mr. Jacobson. He's here tonight to answer any questions if you have those for him. But I'll just give a quick overview here. The applicant owns the adjacent property there and operates the business there, but has been using this property for residential rental and is looking to rezone it because he's been having difficulty having it be an attractive residential rental being on a commercial roadway like this. So at this point, he's looking to move forward with a change in zoning. It would be his intent to combine the two lots in order to expand the office that he has there at 4919 University Avenue at some point in the future. So this is just one of those moves toward consolidating and getting the zoning in place to do so in the future. We have as a part of the proposal here with the rezoning that it be subject to conditions, and that is what's currently in place on the current property that was rezoned back in early 2000. So the major reason is just to consolidate these properties and have consistent zoning in terms of proposing the C1 zoning and the same conditions so that when things move forward in the future, site plan review would come forward to city council under the terms of the agreement. The staff report covers a lot of the areas that were required to consider in a rezoning. We don't find any concerns with any of those. The Planning and Zoning Commission considered this at their meeting and had no concerns, nor did they have any public come to express any comment related to this petition. And so with that, we're recommending approval of the rezoning request.
Thank you. I'll open up to council for questions. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on the project? Mr. Jacobson? Say your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mayor Green and City Council. My name is Brad Jacobson. I live at 806 Latham Place here in Cedar Falls. I'm the owner of the project, and Ms. Sheets did a very nice job, and Mr. Adodario, that put the report together in your packet, did a very nice job summarizing what I want to do, but I'm happy to answer any other questions that you might have, so.
Thank you. Any questions? All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much. So next item then would be passing an ordinance amending Section 218 of the corridor ordinances by removing property located at 4911 University Avenue from the R1 district and placing the same in the C1 district.
So moved.
This requires a roll call vote?
I'll voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next item is old business, number eight, is to pass ordinance 2960 recreating the College Hill Self-Supervised Municipal Improvement District upon its second consideration. Is there a motion?
Move to pass ordinance 2960.
Second.
A motion and seconded. This requires a roll call vote?
I'll voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Under new business, we have the consent calendar first. The following items may be acted on by a voice vote on a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council or public requests that a specific item be considered separately. Are there requests from council?
On item 10, I just would like to have a typographical error corrected.
Okay. And...
That would be on...
So this will be item 10 then?
Right, on item 10, paragraph 3. It should read Ward 5, not Ward 2.
Okay, thank you. Are there other items that are requested for discussion? So that's on, I think through that, I need to do a motion to approve an amendment? Is that correct? Okay, so item 10 is to receive and file the report of the mayor relative to the appointment of the mayor pro tem with amendment by councillor DeBoer. Is there a motion for...
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Sorry for my mistake. And the next is going through the resolution, no. You have to go through the entire... Yeah, so aside from item number 10, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Consent calendar approved. Our resolution calendar, following items may be acted on by a roll call vote on a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council or public requests that a specific item be considered separately. Are there requests from council?
I'd like to poll 16 and 17, please.
Item 16 and 17 will be polled? From the public? Check. Item 33 will be polled?
We're not up to 33 yet. Around 16 to 31.
Item 33 will be further down. Okay, so this is just for the resolution calendar for now. So items... Item 27. Any other items from the public? Okay, so this will be all items on the resolution calendar with the exception of items 16, 17, and 27. And I will read those. 18 is "Resolution Approving and Authorizing Execution of a Contracted Educational Proposal with Black Hawk County and Hartman Reserve in the Cities of Elkhorn Heights, Evansdale, Hudson, Raymond, Waterloo Relative to Providing Public Outreach and Educational Programs Related to Improving Water Quality and Storm Runoff." Item 19 is "Resolution Approving and Accepting Completion of Public Improvements in the Sands Edition." 20 is, oh, excuse me, we polled 20. So 21 is "Resolution Approving the Certificate of Completion and Accepting the Work of SM Henches &amp; Sons for the Dry Run Creek Sewer Improvement Projects Phase 2." 22 is "Resolution Improving and Authorizing Execution of a Professional Services Agreement with AECOM Technical Services for the Olive Street Box Culvert Replacement Project." Item 23 is "Resolution Approving and Accepting a Temporary Easement from CF Gateway Park in Conjunction with the Gateway Business Park at Cedar Falls 1." 24 is "Resolution Approving and Accepting a Temporary Easement from Shiri Mahanagpati," excuse me if I got that wrong, "and Henumata Incorporated in Conjunction with Gateway Business Park at Cedar Falls 1." 25 is "Resolution Approving and Authorizing the Execution of a First Amendment to Developmental Procedures Agreement with CF Gateway Park Incorporated Relative to Gateway Business Park at Cedar Falls 1." 26 is "Resolution Approving and Accepting Completion of Public Improvements in Gateway Business Park at Cedar Falls 1." 28 is "Resolution Setting the 20th of January as the Date of Public Hearing for the Proposed Fiscal Year 2020/2025 Capital Improvements Program." 29 is "Resolution Setting January 20th as the Date of Public Hearing to Consider Entering into a Proposed Agreement for Private Development with SDC Real Estate." 30 is "Resolution Setting January 20th as the Date of a Public Hearing for Entering into a Proposed Second Agreement for Private Development with Standard Distribution." And 31 is "Resolution Setting January 20th as the Date of a Public Hearing to Consider Entering into a Proposed Amendment and Related Restated Agreement for Private Development with Owen 5 LLC." This, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Is there, there's a second? Requires a roll call vote?
I'll voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and circling back to item 16, that is "Resolution Approving the Recommendation of the Director of Public Safety Services and City Administrator by Appointing Craig Birdy as the Acting Police Chief."
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion from council?
I have some questions.
Certainly, Mr. Harding?
I read, there was only one letter in the packet that stated that this has been under consideration for years, right? And I was wondering why we're going ahead and approving an active police chief when, if this has been in the works for that many years. We didn't start a search possibly six months ago. And also, I would feel more comfortable voting on this if I had more information on what the acting police chief is. Is it, how long is that term? Do we have to revote for that? What is the process? Are we going to seek an active, or, you know, a full-time one? I just would like a lot more information.
Thank you. I'll turn to Director Olson for an answer to that.
Certainly, thank you. Yeah, so we have been talking about it for a number of years, and for a number of reasons, we've decided to put this off. It's kind of a difficult decision, particularly when you're talking about a lot of discussion with public safety and which way it's headed. Also, it's been part of a, maybe a phased-in retirement plan for me as well. But we do believe, and I believe, that the best and smoothest organizational structure is to have a public safety director separate from a police chief or the fire chief. And part of the reason that is, is I get some criticism sometime, well, you're spending more time on the police side than you are the fireside. It's not an even distribution. We created the assistant chief position some time ago to kind of fulfill that role, take on a few more responsibilities to free up some of my time to focus on the public safety model. We don't have any other positions. Our intent is to create a police chief position separate from the director, not have any assistant chiefs, so we'd eliminate that assistant chief position. Some cities will have a fire chief and assistant fire chief, a police chief and assistant police chief, or a major or captain or someone serving that assistant chief position. So we're not adding a layer, and we're not adding a position to the public safety department. So, you know, and this model is, or this changes a lot by ordinance and by state law, and the council does approve all the selections. For example, this acting position and the permanent position. Now, the plan to move forward is, it's a civil service process, so civil service rules apply. So we'll have to go through that process, which typically takes, I would say, close to three months.
Thank you. And just to be clear too, this resolution up tonight isn't to establish that position because that was already approved by code years ago that that's allowed. What this only signifies is the person who would take that role. Is that correct? Am I reading that right? Okay. So is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on that as well? Yes, please. Mr. Sharp?
Thank you, Whitney Smith. I live on Neola Street. I have a few questions with this. First, with...
I have a few questions with this. First, with Olson separating his duties and leaving the chief position and just being director, is there a decrease in pay? Is that money being shifted over to the new chief, or is that going to cost taxpayers more money? And then also, actually, I have a few things. The city's been keen on cross-training, so doesn't this go against this? I mean, we're kind of, we had a position that was merged into one, but now we're separating it. Does this cost the taxpayers more? And why do we need two separate positions if crime and fires are so low? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Director Olson?
Certainly. Well, the, by city policy, the pay increase would be 3% to 7% is what the city policy says. So there would be a slight increase in the pay, according to council. You know, it's up to the, I guess, the council, the mayor, the city administrator, as to whether my pay should be changed or not. But I would like to add that when I was promoted to director, I did not receive a pay raise for that. So the only cost would be the pay raise for the police chief. And the other questions, I think, were kind of answered before about more of a streamlined organizational structure.
Okay, any other questions or comments? We'll wait, please, for a public, just a public comment. And a name and address again for the record.
Rick Sharp, 1623 Burt Street, Cedar Falls. I'd like to have the opportunity to ask follow-up questions if the staff or council provides inadequate or incomplete answers. So on item 16, the director states that he resigned from the police chief position to hold just a public safety director position, so that there will be a smoother administrative organizational structure within the department. Since I'm seeking an appointment to the council, I'm asking these questions for more information and also to see what the staff and council means by being financially prudent. So why did the director decide to do this to split the roles? Was he unable to do both jobs at the same time, and that required a split in the duties? It was already mentioned about if he's going to get a pay raise or a pay cut on this. I ask about the salary wages, because the city has stated that the reasons why the PSOs deserve higher wages than regular police officers or firefighters was because they have more duties and more responsibilities. So wouldn't the director get a pay cut because he now has less duties and responsibilities? Looking at the FY '20 payroll resolution, Director Olson makes about $75.45 an hour. Applying that hourly rate to a 40-hour work week, that equates to about $156,940 a year, not counting longevity pay or benefits. As for the appointment of Assistant Police Chief Craig Birdy to fill the police chief role, the director said that he plans to eliminate the assistant police chief position. Maybe the search process is just a formality and follow rules, but if someone is hired outside the city, will Birdy maintain the assistant police chief title? If so, why? Also, and again, in the name of being financially prudent, will Birdy get a pay raise if he gets promoted? Looking at the FY '20 payroll resolution, Birdy makes about $59.27 an hour, and Fire Chief John Boswick makes about $59.41 an hour. Applying those to the 40-hour work week, Birdy currently makes over $123,285 annually, and Boswick makes over $123,581 annually, not counting longevity pay or other benefits. Those figures show that Birdy makes almost as much as a fire chief. So if there is a pay raise for Birdy, how much would that be? And if there is an outside hire for the police chief, again, what happens to Birdy and the assistant police chief position and pay? Would it still be eliminated? Again, I'm just trying to be financially prudent and understand this in the event that I am appointed. I ask because some in the city or people that are interested in the new, the open seat cite the $15,000 cost of having a special election as the reason why there should be an appointment. I would suspect management wages, either in pay increases or creating new positions, are more costly than holding a special election. Thank you.
Thank you. For Director Olson, for what you can comment on, offer the chance to do that.
Yeah, I think some of those questions I've already answered previously. The intent is to eliminate the assistant chief position. If nobody has applied, we haven't opened up the application process, if he was not to retain the position, that assistant chief position would be eliminated.
Thank you.
In fact, it'll be eliminated either way.
One more question. Okay, I'll turn it back to, Mr. Dix, please come forward. Name and address and organization for the record.
Scott Dix, 7821 North Union Road. I'm also the president of Cedar Falls Firefighters, professional, local 1366. I wanted to apprise his counsel and remember that when we went into this public safety venture, one of the main credences was efficiencies and the other one was savings. He talked about huge cost savings to the citizens, synergies. Prior to public safety, we had a fire chief, we had a police chief. We did not have a public safety director. Now, we will be back to the same position of a police chief and a fire chief with similar pays in comparison to their constituents throughout the state, as they were back then, same ratios, but we will now added this near $200,000 worth benefit, public safety director position. How in any way does this form a synergy or improve our benefits whatsoever over separate police and fire? This is more of the added management that we see. Because as we see coming after this, I didn't see it in this week's council packet, but you'll see another addition to the public safety positions coming forward yet again, related to more synergies within the city and more creation, more managerial positions within public safety. This does not help us. I don't, we fail to see how this makes us safer, how it saves us more money. It's just more added weight at the top with less employees at the bottom. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, for tonight, this resolution is for the appointment of a person to the acting police chief position. It's not a discussion of whether this approach or this organizational structure has merit. That would be a council discussion to decide down the road if this is an approach that we want to continue. But as per the ordinance, it is authorized for the Director of Public Safety to appoint a separate police chief. So that, is there any other discussion from council on this? Mr. Hardy?
Just one question. So my, you did answer the questions very well. I just, the one that you didn't answer is, why are, why did we, if we knew this was coming down the pipeline for so long, why did we wait and then just have an active? Why did we not search, just do a search starting six months ago?
Well, you know, again, it was a lot of discussion about, I guess, the appropriate timing, you know, because we had talked about doing this for a amount of time. You know, again, and part of it is kind of a, you know, it's a phased-in retirement plan for me as well to move, to start making some moves, to mentoring some others. I think, you know, and just an additional comment, again, we are not adding a position. We're simply changing from an assistant chief to a chief position to, just to kind of make the roles and responsibilities a little more even and a little more evenly distributed between the departments. And, you know, there's always been discussion about, you know, pay between one chief and another chief, and the market kind of drives a lot of what those wages are. The number of years in the job drives that as well, too, because the longer someone's in the job, if they start out the same wage, the more they've accumulated pay raises throughout the years, too. So there's a lot of considerations there.
Any other comments from, questions from council?
Yeah, I have, I have a couple.
Counselor Sires?
Thank you. The police chief and the fire chief are some of the most important jobs that we have in this city. And why is that not a council or an elected person's job? I'm just, I can't believe that somebody who's an employee chooses the next employee. And I happen to like Craig Birdy. That's not it at all, and he knows that. But it seems to me it should, the person should be chosen by the council, and we should look into all the candidates. Now, we used to actually have a personnel committee that was made up of council people. And they went ahead and chose who the police chief was and who the fire chief was. And I think we need to go back to those days where it gave the citizens who voted more of a voice on the council. When you start to take away those things that the representatives can't do, which they should do, I think that's a big problem.
Thank you. And we do have to follow the law as it is and not as we wish it would be. I certainly would love to entertain a discussion later for changing the policies if we believe that's needed, but that would probably be a work session.
If I may, just comment on that. Typically, I think with new hires, there are several council people that sit amongst a committee of staff members and council people to make those decisions. Being this is a change from an assistant police chief to an acting police chief, I think the appropriate measure typically, the way our system is set up is that staff makes that call. But in the event that we are hiring a new police chief, typically, there's a couple council people that sit on that committee to make sure that that representation is there, but I think there's also a variable of politics in these decisions, too, that can run far and wide.
But isn't this the time to make those decisions instead of just promoting from within? Isn't this a time, and it's like I said, I like Craig Birdy, 100%, but this would be a time where we could look to find somebody that might be tougher on drugs or something else that we're looking for, or somebody that wants dogs, or...
And I think that...
You know what I mean? It's just a bringing up from the bottom, and the appointment is made by another employee where it should be made by the council, because we are voted in, and we represent the citizens, and we represent what they want.
And I think, going back to the mayor's point, this is a motion to approve the recommendation to move him from assistant police chief to acting police chief. So the appropriate time would be when that RFP goes out to hire the acting police chief.
So he is just temporary for how long? Craig will be temporary for how long?
Well, it takes about three months to go through the civil service process, and a police officer is a civil service, so a lot of that takes into consideration what the Civil Service Commission's schedule is to meet those meetings.
And this acting designation would be in effect for 180 days. If there was a failed search, if we needed to continue with Mr. or Officer Birdy as the acting, then it would be an additional requirement for a resolution for another 180 days. So it's not indefinite.
So this is a temporary hire for 180 days, and he'll be the police chief? And then from there, you'll take applications?
So during that...
And his will be one of them also? And it's like I say, I like Craig Birdy. Don't get me wrong. But is that how it goes?
If he chooses to apply. So what would happen is, we'll advertise, there's a testing mechanism that has to go out, and then that testing mechanism is blindly scored, and then the Civil Service Commission determines who makes the actual list of qualified candidates. And then, and then there's typically two rounds of interviews. What happens, the way the ordinance reads currently is that the Director of Public Safety recommends the city administrator, who recommends the mayor, for approval by the council of the police chief and fire chief. So, for instance, in this particular case, there'll be a round of interviews that go on that are performed at the staff level, and then there'll be a round of interviews that go on, and we've done this in the past for a lot of the department directors, police chiefs, fire chiefs, and it would be the city administrator, the mayor, mayor pro tem, and administrative committee chairman. So in this, as we took action earlier this evening...
And how about the councilman at large? Do I get in on some of those, too?
You actually get to vote on the appointment.
But that's, that's later on.
That's correct.
I don't get to cut any of the employees or any of the candidates.
Not according to the way that the ordinance is set up currently. You're correct.
Can that be changed, Mr. Mayor?
We are a city, or you are a city council, and you can bring up as a referral or as an item to change an ordinance. That certainly is within your purview to request.
Because I don't see the representation of the people in something as important as the police chief or the fire chief. It looks like it's all done by staff, and I like staff, too, but I think it should be held to the representatives of this city to make those big choices.
Okay. So that'd be one that I would recommend for a referral, or recommend that a referral be drafted for council to consider and approve so that it can be potentially changed. So we can certainly discuss that after, how that process works. Any other comments or questions from council?
There's a question. So I'm just trying to make sure I know exactly what I'm voting on. So it's essentially a title change from assistant police chief to acting police chief, correct?
A temporary change.
A temporary... So are we actually, are we just voting on the title, or are we voting on a pay increase as well?
So the way the ordinance reads currently is someone that's appointed to an acting police chief position can serve in that realm for 21 days. After 21 days, they're afforded a 3% increase, no longer than 180 days.
Well, there was only one page in the packet. I wish all this was in the packet.
It's in the ordinance.
Okay, that would be, yeah.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion or questions? Then I'll look for a motion to approve...
We have a motion. I think you can call for the vote.
Oh, okay, that's right. We already called for it. So this will require a roll call
Four voting aye, two voting nay, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. The next is item 17, resolution approving and adopting certain revised personnel policies.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And is there a council discussion?
17.
Correct, on item 17. Is there a council discussion or questions?
Yes, I did want to discuss that one.
Counselor Sires?
That one had a whole lot of stuff in it that was about retirement benefits and insurance. And it was gonna, it was going to take away insurance from people who had already put in with the city. Is that not correct?
Mr. Gaines?
Number seven.
Or Director Redback?
Sure. So one of the things is that we've had retirees have always been able to stay on our insurance, but they pay the full 100% cost of the premium. So what we discovered, though, with our health insurance consultant, is that once a retiree reaches the age of 65, they're no longer covered under our stop-loss carrier. Now, that's obviously a very, very major thing that could happen. If someone has a major thing that happens and they're covered under stop-loss, that's a significant cost. So one of the things that our insurance consultants advised us is that's pretty unusual that people let people stay on after 65, really Medicare-eligible. It's really, that's what it's about. So that Medicare is the primary insurance. So this is, we were actually very unusual to have had that before, so that's why, based on our consultants, we're recommending that once they're 65, that they should go on Medicare, and they would no longer be able to stay on our insurance.
But aren't these things that were promised to those firefighters or police officers way back when they took their job and served all their time, and now you're going to cut those things?
Well, I just want to clarify that, you know, they've always had to pay the premium. So it wasn't that the city was paying the insurance, that the employee themselves had to do that.
But the red, the red is all the changes that you've made, and they're all legal changes.
Okay.
And to have to read all this, I'm not a lawyer. It just seems to me that you are trying to cut benefits to people who deserve them.
Well, you know, you also have to remember that most people don't continue to stay on our insurance after 65. They go on Medicare. It's pretty unusual that someone stays on the city's insurance. In fact, right now, we're only talking about a couple employees, actually, because most people just choose not to do it because it's more expensive to stay on the city's health insurance than it is Medicare. So it's a very unusual thing. And again, I understand your part about cutting benefits. On the same token, I would argue the risk, the risk to the city and the cost of someone not being able to be covered under our stop-loss carrier would be a significant cost, or could be.
And as I read through here also, it said about drug testing and drug screening our employees. Shouldn't that also follow as to people on the council? Shouldn't we all be drug tested and drug screened also? Wouldn't that be a good idea?
I don't believe that's a...
Asking the council?
I don't believe that's a question we can answer tonight.
Okay, but that's one of my questions, because if our employees get drug screened, I think we should also. That's all.
Thank you.
Because I read a lot of red in here. So I've been busy. You guys put out a... You guys put out a packet that was, well, you know how thick it was, and it was both sides, but I went through every page, so that's all I have to say on that.
Thank you. Any other comments from council or questions?
I have a question.
Councilor Harding?
I did my due diligence to study the incredibly large Chapter 17, and I should've looked how many pages it was. It's gotta be over 100, close to 100, but um-
Here it is, right here. And that's both sides.
Please, please don't interrupt.
It's a lot of, it's a lot of changes, it really is. And I would like the council to possibly consider tabling this so that we could actually take more time to study and make sure that the changes we are implementing are really, truly positive. I just did not have enough time over the past, you know, 24, 48 hours to really digest that much information to make sure I was making a smart decision. So I would urge, I would appeal to the council to please possibly table this so we could study it longer.
Before that, I'll ask Mr. Gaines.
Yeah.
Not yet, or I'd like to wait just for a moment, just for a question. Is it, is there anything that's time-critical for this, to have to pass it tonight?
I don't think so.
So-
The only thing would be the stuff at the end, the ombudsman.
Ombudsman is, there's a time constraint. Also, the federal Motor Care Act, drug testing went into effect the first, so we need to get those changes in there right away.
So is there a motion to table until the 20th, our next meeting?
I would present a motion to table until the 20th.
So there's a motion to table to the 20th?
I'll second it.
There's a second? For motion to table to the 20th, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
And I'll need a hand, is that how we do it? Hand gesture?
Eyes or nays.
Hand gesture.
What's that?
Eyes or nays.
So eyes or nays for a vote?
No, for which one you wanted to show.
Okay, that's right. Makes sense. All those in favor, left hand. Okay, great. All is opposed, right hand. Excellent. So motion fails. We are back to the original for a motion, we have a motion already to approve the Personnel Manual as written.
Oh, no.
Oh, you're right. I'm sorry. Yes, please. Public, please come, if you have a question. Mr. Dix, would you like to come forward first? You think I've been on council for two years.
Scott Dix, 7821 North Union Road. I'll start with what Mr. Sires had talked about. These were benefits, the retiree benefits, not just for them but for their families. You say it affects a very small percentage of people, only a handful, and that your stop-cap carrier, this is not, would not cover those. There are other stop-cap carriers. The city could cover those. These are benefits that people work their entire life for. This is life-changing things to many people, especially if they have existing conditions and can't get on other insurances. And while to you, it looks like risk, it does affect the lives of serious people and their families. So on that single issue, it's not something that can't be done, it's just something you want to take away from the employees. And reviewing the other issues here, the leaves of absences, we go through and we see the changes that are being made, and every change that's being made is negative towards the employee. We go through here where if you're on a leave of absence now, the addition of, on page 190, the addition of H, the availability of paid benefit time is no guarantee of continued employment. What that means is, because if you look in here, you also see where the city wants to run the Family Medical Leave Act concurrent with any time off you use. They're not required to. I'm not aware of any government law that requires you to. Simply choose, the city simply chooses to do that, which burns your time faster. So you're only guaranteed 12 weeks of time off. For whatever reason, after that point in time, the city would, this now, would change it so that you would be at the whim of them as to whether they wanted to keep you or not. Now, mind, you were talking about paid benefit time off. An employee worked, earned, whether it be holiday, vacation, or sick leave, and you're saying that you won't even wait until the person has used up the time that they've earned as an employee before you decide to fire them? That you want to go ahead and fire them and just pay them out and get rid of them? And I think that's very poor management, sets a very poor standing as far as us as an employer of people and how we treat people. I failed to see any changes that came through here that were positive anyway, such as towards the grievance panel changes, which I think, and were no small effect, the fact that I pointed these out to the city attorney, that during my current grievance, that the city wasn't following. And what we're changing these things are, they're changing it from, a grievance panel will hold a hearing on a date at the earliest convenience to all parties involved, all parties. Now, that's not asking a lot. It means if I have an issue, if you have an issue, we work it out and we do it to what's convenient for everybody. If you're waiting for information, but now it's changed to say that it'll be with, the grievance panel shall hold a hearing within 10 business days of receipt and appeal unless the time period is extended by the grievance panel for good cause. Now, to the average person, they might think, well, that's pretty similar, but it's not. It takes away the rights of the employee to have input into it. It lets the grievance panel have 100% control over it, to where if it's beneficial to them, but you don't have the information as an employee that you're currently waiting on, then they can go ahead and move forward on that. These changes aren't being made in a way that can be substantiated as some efficiency. They're being done to eliminate, eliminate benefits to employees, or the word up in the top here, a belief that a city policy practice, rules, and regulations, procedures have been implied in a manner, and they add the word arbitrarily detrimental to an employee. Because somehow had been applied in a manner that was, in a manner detrimental to employee wasn't good enough, it now had to be arbitrarily detrimental to an employee. I think anything that's detrimental to employee, that the application of, would be something you'd want to consider in these grievance panels. But now you've tried to add an extra word in there that says, whoop, you're considering too much, it must be arbitrarily now done. I would ask that you not approve these, and then you come back at the 20th meeting and approve the ones that are truly needed by state law, and look at these seriously, and sit down and take the time to look at them and say, why are we making these changes? Because if you continually take away the rights of the employees, at what point in the past were these rights given to the employees? Why were they given to the employees? It seems like a continual erosion of the way you treat employees in the city of Cedar Falls. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else from public who wishes to respond? Smith?
I promise I won't be that lengthy. Whitney Smith, Neola Street. As somebody who suffers from a chronic illness, disease, my husband has had to take off time and I am forever thankful to his employers for the way that they've backed him and supported him, and that just goes to show the quality of employees that a city can retain. We've lost a lot of employees over the last few years, and it's because of the way they're being treated, and this is just another step in saying, we don't value you. And I'll tell you that, as an employee, I mean, if you don't feel valued, you will leave. Are we looking to lose our employees because we can't just table something for two weeks and really look it over? I'd hope that you guys would consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Anyone else in the public wish to comment? You're saying none? I'll take it back to council. Any final comments? Councilor DeBerk?
Yeah, a question for Jennifer. I think there's a misunderstanding as to what is and isn't covered. In the memorandum, it says that the city's stop-loss insurance does not cover these individuals. So they are not losing anything that was currently covered by their insurance. Is that correct? I mean, it says-
Correct. I mean, the stop-loss, like I said, will not be, will not cover them. And so I think, again, from a staff standpoint and a risk standpoint, that's very difficult to try to maintain, keep in mind, we're self-funded, fund, to keep in mind how much we would have to have to cover some kind of catastrophic loss that's not covered by stop-loss.
Thank you. Councilor Miller?
In terms of buying healthcare insurance on the, in the marketplace for an average person, we go out and we compare where, or the city goes out and compares where we're at comparatively with other, buying this for an individual, do we not?
Well, usually, and maybe this is what you're referring to, Mr. Miller, is, you obviously through the collective bargaining process every year, or years that we're doing that, you know, a lot of times we're comparing ourselves to what other cities, you know, what other city employees are contributing to health insurance. I think most people from the private sector would look at that our health insurance here is very advantageous to employees. You know, the city picks up about 95, 93% of the cost of health insurance. I think most people in the private sector would tell you that's unusual for them. So again, I think it's a very high benefit plan. I think what the employee contributes is a fair and equitable cost when you compare it to employees from other cities.
Sure. That is what I was intending. I have another point, if I may. The speaker is clearly very well-versed in the grievance process. Can Attorney Rogers offer some info on the change being made there? Are we taking rights away from employees here?
The changes in the grievance process were, a couple were mentioned. The first was the statement about action being detrimental. Well, by definition, if there's any disciplinary action taken against any employee, it's always detrimental, but what is the grievance process for? It's for unfair application of that discipline. And so the change was made to arbitrary. If someone is singled out arbitrarily for treatment under a policy, that's something that folks that are reviewing the grievance would want to know about. That was that change. The other was setting forth timeframes for getting these hearings done, because when it's open-ended, it doesn't seem fair to either side to prolong it for days and weeks. And so there's a deadline, as there is with every step of the grievance prior to the top two steps, to be consistent with a timeframe. And every step up, the timeframe is a little longer because there are more people involved. And I think the change for the administration committee was 15 business days, so that's about three weeks, and there's a provision for extending it for good cause. That could be caused by the administration committee, it could be caused for the grievant, that that time could be expended. But it's to set a timeframe, a target, so that with the logistics of getting all you folks together, that we had a target to get the hearing over with so that for the benefit of the employee and for management, the thing is resolved one way or another.
Thank you.
And additional? Wait, excuse me. Did I, I believe I already closed public comment? Okay. So, sorry about that. So we are at still council discussion, if there's any additional comments?
I just wanted to go on record saying that, to me, it's just a lot, it's a large amount of information to digest and go over and make a decision on. So I just don't, that's why I wanted to table it. I just don't feel comfortable making that decision with only 24 hours of studying.
Thank you. So it's been motioned and seconded for resolution approving and adopting certain revised personnel policies. This requires a roll call vote.
Four voting aye, two voting nay, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. The next item is number 27, a resolution approving and authorizing execution of supplemental agreement number one to the professional services agreement with Farrell Madden LLC for the College Hill Study Area Amendment relative to the Cedar Falls Visioning and Zoning Update Project.
I'll just approve.
Is a motion to approve and seconded for discussion from council, from the public?
I had a comment on that. Is, this is to look into the College Hill area and what exactly is the study? It's the same firm that did the downtown area, now they're gonna do College Hill, and it's 165,000. I'm just trying to remember, because I don't see it here in my, in my notes pulled out. Is that not what it is?
I was trying to do city staff.
Yes, that's correct. The staff memo outlines what it would cover, very similar to the downtown processes being proposed for the College Hill area and some surrounding neighborhoods. The packet included a map of that study area and the cost as you referred to. Did you have any particular questions?
Yeah, who requested that? And why are we doing that? Isn't College Hill a nice place the way it is? I'm just, I'm just concerned, when you call for a study, you're usually, you're usually looking to change something. What are we looking to change on College Hill?
Well, what we recognize, the council recognized this, actually, when the 2012 comprehensive plan was adopted. The council put into the capital improvements plan at that time, a couple of years out, that zoning revisions, and really, I was calling it an overhaul in 2014, that that was the goal, to really make a lot of changes to the zoning ordinance as well as the zoning map. And enough time had gone by that we felt that the 2012 effort needed to also kind of be revisited in terms of doing visioning. So that's what we did with the downtown, confirm or set what that vision should be before you're changing the policies that regulate kind of how you get there and the pattern of development that should happen. So make sure that you know what you want to go in, in terms of doing regulation-wise by doing that visioning process. So as we talked about with the council a year or two ago in goal-setting, is that we gradually wanted to be doing all parts of the community, and so College Hill and the neighborhoods around that would be the second step toward that, and there will be several more to come.
Did they call for that, or did the city call for that? Was the College Hill area, did they want a study done on that?
Last year-
That's my, that's my curiosity, when we're gonna spend $165,000, who was calling for that study? That's all.
Well, last year, when we talked about it at council goal-setting, it was talked about College Hill being the second area that we would visit, and we talked about that again in our most recent goal-setting.
I'll also note, too, that with this process, I thought on council too, like, boy, this is a significant amount of money. What it's doing is basically overhauling or redoing city code for zoning that hasn't really been comprehensively visited in 50 years. So the money that's gonna be spent on this and the research and the effort done to this will definitely impact the city for the next 50. So I look at that as almost an amortized cost, of saying, yes, this is critical that we get this absolutely right.
It just seems like a lot of money when-
Oh, it is.
-nobody up there seemed to be calling for it. We don't have anybody from the College Hill area saying, hey, we want to study. That's all.
Mr. Mayor? I'll, just a moment, I'll take the initiative to ask College Hill Partnership to speak on this.
My name is Catherine Sogard, and I'm the Executive Director of the College Hill Partnership. I live over at 330 in Columbia Circle in Waterloo. The College Hill Partnership is in full support of this visioning. We were, I think, where a lot of confusion has come up with planning and zoning and council in the past, as well as the partnership and neighbors, is some of the code is a little bit dated, or it might be a little bit, it has a lot of gray area in it. So what this visioning is going to do is help us as a community come together, work with you guys, work with the community, work with the partnership, work with the neighborhood, work with the university, which is a key part up on College Hill, to explore what college, the College Hill area could be. And we're very excited for this opportunity to work with the community, to develop the vision going forward, and also to clarify some of the confusing language, because it's not only been confusing for council and the Planning and Zoning Commission, but also the neighborhood developers of the College Hill Partnership. So we are really excited about this opportunity, and we've already kind of, we've started to work with city staff to organize some of the preliminary meetings, and so we're really hopeful that this visioning will help us reinvigorate our code to make it easier for everybody to understand, so that we all know kind of where we want College Hill to go.
All right. Thank you, Director Sogard. And we are still in council discussion, so, Councilor Harding?
Do we have a potential start date or anything up? I read through and there weren't any hard dates. I know it's kind of up in the air. I just wanted to know if we had an idea possibly when we could get started and check it out?
Yes, we do. If the contract is approved tonight, we're looking at the kickoff event being at the end of January, so we would be sending out postcards to the study area beginning of next week at the latest. As Director Sogard said, we've already talked with her a little bit about coordinating a couple meetings during that three days that the consultant would be here in January, and then the week-long charrette activity, we're targeting the end of March, early April week there, and looking to confirm that with a consultant so that we can advertise that with our postcards as well.
Thanks.
Councilor Sires, I saw your hand.
Yeah, that's all I wanted was-
week there, and looking to confirm that with a consultant so that we can advertise that with our postcards as well.
Cool, thanks.
Councilor Sires, I saw your hand.
Yeah, that's all I wanted, was somebody from College Hill area to say, we want this. That was all I wanted.
Okay, thank you. Any other comment from council? It's been motioned and seconded. All those in favor, or, excuse me, those cries a roll call vote.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. That clears out our resolution calendar, and the next item we have is under ordinances, item thirty-two, pass an ordinance amending chapter twenty-three, traffic and motor vehicles of the Code of Ordinances relative to establishing parking regulations in conjunction with the implementation of recommendations from the downtown and college hill parking studies upon its first consideration. And I've asked for just a quick summary from city staff on this, so I believe we have Ms. Ray with us tonight.
Do we need a motion before comment?
Yep.
Okay, I will do that.
So moved.
Sure.
Second.
Okay, so it's been motioned and seconded, and now we'll go to Ms. Ray.
Thank you. As you recall, last year, the council approved ordinance amendments triggering the implementation of the downtown district parking. That provided additional parking, on-street parking choices, fifteen-minute drop-off pickup zones, overnight parking on side streets, extended enforcement time, and allowed for new technology of paid parking lots in the downtown district. The consideration today will be to begin the implementation process of the College Hill District Parking, from the council-approved parking study recommendations. This allows for enforcement to six P.M. Monday through Friday in the College Hill District, adds technology to paid, adds technology to paid public lot Twenty-two Street West and Twenty-Second Street East formerly known as Lot G and J. Other amendments to the ordinance include general cleanup and renaming the public parking lots to the new naming structure.
Okay. Questions from council?
I guess, excuse me, Mayor, I'm just kind of curious, when these changes are made, how do, how do we communicate these changes to folks? I, I felt like downtown, there was still some confusion, so what's our strategy for letting people know the changes?
We've used a lot of ways to communicate with folks. We've made brochures that we've given to downtown businesses. We've utilized Channel Fifteen. We've had lots of press releases. The Current is also a great opportunity for us to, to get our message out about parking. We've also worked really hard on our website, our City of Cedar Falls website. We have our own parking site on there. That kind of goes through our implementation process as well, so.
Good, thank you.
Any comments or questions from the public? Okay, back to council. Any final? So, this requires a roll call vote.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. The, item thirty-three, fill council vacancy. This is a resolution approving and filing, or filling the at-large city council vacancy by appointment, directing publication or notice of the same, and establishing the, the application filing deadline and date of appointment, or resolution calling for a special election to fill the at-large city council vacancy. I'll entertain motions for either.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we fill the at-large council seat by appointment.
Okay, so it's been motioned?
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded. I'll open it up to council discussion.
If I may.
Yes. Senator Miller?
This is a tricky one, and I fully expect the public to bring signatures to push for a special election. My purpose in this is to make sure that seat doesn't sit empty for three months or four months. If it goes to a runoff, we don't know that timeframe, so I'd like to see seven people up here.
Okay.
I'd, I'd like to comment, absolutely not.
Councilor Sires?
Absolutely not. We need to have an election. If we vote for that right now, it'll be the shortest amount of time that, that it would take to get an election. If we wait around and don't do that, and we fight with the appointment, and then they get signatures, they'll, they'll still have the election and that'll be fine. Now, the citizens were smart enough to elect all of us, so let's let them elect the person to fill that spot also. That's what real democracy is, and that's what real democracy is all about. I don't ever believe that we should appoint to that unless we're in a crisis situation and need that kind of a vote.
Yeah, thank you. And I'll ask Mr. Gaines, can you talk a bit about the, the timing if we want to have this as part of the school election on March third? How that would work for tonight and what has to be done?
So, if you go into the state code requirements, what, what it takes to actually have a special election and what it requires to, to coordinate with the county. If we have the, if the council elects to move to appointing a, or to appointing someone, we go down a different road. If we actually, if we elect to go to a special election, what happens is we can probably get on the March third agenda for the county to hold that special election March third, which also, there's currently a school ballot item that will be on there as well. So, there could defer some of the cost with regard to that special election.
Thank you. Additional council discussion, Councilor DeBir?
And, Mr. Gaines, we've had several people put in their names that they'd be, be willing to be appointed to this position, is that correct?
So, currently, there's actually no formal application to the city. If, if the council would elect tonight to move forward with appointing someone, tomorrow would open it up and there's a, a small application to show interest. Essentially, it's name, address, email, phone number, and that would then, the public would then submit those names to the city clerk, and that would be in front of you on, on January twentieth. We have no formal applications at this time. We have been made aware that there's people interested.
So, if I understand right, we'd be looking at, if this were a vote to move to appointment, then people could apply starting tomorrow, and then their, their names would be on the ballot or, or up for discussion. Does I understand, in the twentieth meeting, if that occurs, then each council member could bring up a motion to approve a certain person? And then, it either goes to a, a vote yes or a fail, and then to the next person, vote yes or fail? Is that correct?
Yes, but there would not necessarily be a rhyme or reason to why you would have to inspect the first person or the last person on the, on the ballot.
Okay. All right, additional comments? Councilor Miller?
Mr. Gaines, does, so if we go to an appointment, how does that change the timeframe for when an election could happen? Could you still hit that March third deadline? And I guess the other question to that is, what is on the docket for the school board? Do we know?
I'm not sure of the agenda item for the, for the school board. It's, I'm just not sure. I, I can't comment on that. But, but with regard to the twenty-five and thirty-two day notices that have to be made, we think it would be very difficult for, if we move to the twentieth, to actually meet those deadlines and give applicants or candidates that want to run for the office, the appropriate amount of time to get their signatures, to get everything in place. It really becomes a compressed timeframe.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions from, comments from council? I will open it up to the public. So, Mr. Smith, if you'd like to come forward.
Stand Smith, thirty-two, twenty-one Pleasant Drive, former city councilman. This is not new. We have appointed people before, when there probably was no interest in the job to begin with. In the seventies, we appointed Sandy Glenn to represent Ward Four. And we did it by passing the hat and putting our names in a hat. There were about six candidates, and we passed the hat until we got a majority for Sandy. Not that we were seeking a majority for anybody, but that just happened it. The first majority we got, we put her on the council. She served well, and it was over in Deadwood. I don't know what the fright is about having the people elected. Dave said it, we were smart enough to put you up there. Why don't you trust us? Mark, why don't you trust us?
I'll, I'll ask that to, to address the speaker.
All right. But I, I think, Jackie, you better go back and get some history on that so that they can be advised of it.
And again, I'll ask you to address the, this me as the presiding official.
We're gonna talk.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you. Ms. Sol, name, name and-
Yes, Lee Anne Sol, eighteen-twenty-five Green Hill Road, Cedar Falls. I, just in the climate and how the last election this past fall went, I would just recommend that we go ahead and go to special election. That will help us with the timeframe, hopefully help us on cost. I would just highly recommend that we go to a special election.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll ask, do we have a, someone in favor of appointment to speak? Okay, so I'll turn back to those for special election. Sir.
Ron Florrie, three oh one Spruce Hill Drive. I think with six candidates that were listed in the newspaper anyway for the position, that we should hold a special election and not expect the city council to pick them on six when there's that much interest.
Okay, thank you Dr. Florrie. Next speaker? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, city council.
Name and address for the record.
What?
Just your name and address for the record first.
I was just getting ready to say it.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Minette Anderson, twenty-five oh eight Union Road. I think an election would be appropriate. I've been researching this. If we have a thousand signatures, so the date is by, do we have to have so many signatures by the twentieth, did you say, of January? Or no date?
So, I'll, I'll turn that to staff to, and I'll, I'll address that question after you're finished speaking.
Okay, please do. That's all I have to say.
Okay.
And I can get signatures, and I just want to know a date, and how many?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Gaines, could you answer that for us?
So, if there's an appointment made by the city council on the twentieth, it would be fourteen days after that appointment, that the clerk would need to recite, to receive the, the petition.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker? Yes, Ms. Smith?
Again, Whitney Smith. I live on Neola Street. I just want to ask you guys, you guys know we're going to have a petition, so why are we going to prolong this? Obviously, we're dead set on it, so I'm asking you guys, who represent me, to just vote to have an election. We're going to do it. There's no point in wasting time. And I do want to know, if the city does make an appointment to council, does that, that person then will serve until election? Is that how that works? Because I, I really feel like that is a violation of our rights as Cedar Falls residents, that we don't get to choose the person who represents us. This is an at-large seat, and this person represents all of us, and we all need to have a say in who that person is. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And as part of that, with the appointment, it is, it is possible to, for council to appoint somebody in the interim. I think Councilor Miller alluded to that, that you, you may still have a general election but have someone in that seat during that time as a temporary. So, if council, as I understand, if council does appoint someone at the earliest next week, then that person isn't necessarily in that spot for, you know, for more than the time it takes to have that election. Do I, do I understand that correct?
If the council elects to appoint someone, they're there for, to fulfill the, the remainder of this term or until a special election is held.
Correct. So, it could be a temporary, almost like a, an interim city council member until the general election is held and the final is, is put into, into place. So, other, yes?
Can I ask a question in the interim?
Yes.
Mr. Gaines, in the event, so six people are running, the election, election rules still apply, somebody needs to get fifty-one percent, correct? Or there's a runoff?
Fifty percent plus one vote.
So, then, in the event of a runoff, how do, do the guidelines play into that? What kind of timeframe are we looking at there?
So, again, you would have the, the initial election, and then typically what the runoff has been about a month or shortly after, a month after that election time period.
Effective immediately once that election takes place.
Correct.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Beach?
Hi, Rosemary Beach, Western Home Community, Cedar Falls, Iowa. I am in agreement with the fact that we do need an election. I think that if you look at what happened to our present election, and so, the people who were not chosen to retain their seats seemed to be peoples that were leaning pretty far one direction. I look at that as saying, there needs to be, the council needs to be out of it. I love you all dearly, but some of you've been on for a while, and you could hear tonight that a lot, the two young people, I don't know, young, the two new people. Sorry about that, Dave. Have a lot to learn, that's true. There's, I mean, packets are packets, and reading is reading, and time is time. However, I feel that if you appoint someone, there's always going to be that question of, well, we got the one that's going to go this direction, and the one that's going to go that direction. And it's basically on the PSOs as far as I can think. And I think it's not convenient for the city, as large as we are, not to have the opportunity to talk, to listen to these people. I'd like to see a small time spot spent at this, at the community center where, as you people who are elected, had an opportunity first to question you. Many of the names I don't know that are asking to be on city council. Do I really want them to be my representative at large? I don't think so. I'd like to know what they thought before I knew they were there. So, I'm advocating to spend the money, you spend money for people to come in and tell you how to run your city all the time. And I think we deserve as citizens to be able to have a vote. Having somebody over there, just because they're there is not my answer, it's because they belong there. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Beach. Mr. Didier?
Good evening. Nate Didier, five oh one Barbara Drive. It was moved and seconded for the appointment, and the comment was made immediately that you're sure that we're going to get the thousand signatures needed to have the election, and right now, your community is telling you what they want. So, my question to you is, why are you looking to bypass our most basic American right to choose our own elected officials? Thanks.
I think, Mr. Didier? Yes, Ms. Slendick? And name and address for the record.
Tracy Slendick, one thousand eight Rockland Street. Well, I know for a fact that at least four of you up here are pro PSO. And so, with that being said, with the candidates that put their application in, if any of them say that they're against the PSO program and want to separate it, like I know a couple of you guys are, thank you. Anyways, the, the majority's going to vote them out, and there's only going to be a couple that's going to say, no, we, we would like them, and their vote's not even going to count. So, if it's, it's, if it's appointed by the, by our council, it's not going to be a fair vote. And so, that's, that's why I want the, our public to vote, because we voted our, our new people in because of that, that, that separation that we want with our PSO, our fire department, and our police department. And, you know, with the family that, we have suffered a fire, and so, we know what this is like. So, you know, we, we want this cause to be seen and know that, that's what we're all here for, for a vote, for us to be listened to, and that's why we voted in some new people in here. And thank you, guys.
All right, thank you, Ms. Slendick. Any other speakers for tonight? Yes, Mr. Sharp, go ahead. Ms. Reginald, go ahead.
Sharon Reginald, Lily Put Lane. I have two things. First is just a clarification. I was confused with the appointment part and the temporary appointment. If we appoint at all, does that mean that we have to get the signatures? Or is there a temporary appointment with the special election already decided on tonight? So, that's the question. I didn't think that was very well stated, or I didn't understand it very well, anyway.
Thank you.
And then, the second thing is, so I was curious how much a special election would call, call- And then the second thing is, um, so I was curious how much a special election would call, cost. So I actually called the election office today and asked them. And they said it's gonna cost between ten and twelve thousand dollars for a special election. However, if we pair that up with the school board election or the school election, then they pay half and we play half. So it'll only cost us six thousand dollars at most for that election. It seems like, again, with what was said here even among you guys, that you expect a special election to take place, whether you decide to go that way or not. And if you do appoint, it's gonna take longer. So we'll be paying the twelve thousand dollars for that when we could just pay the six. Just wanted to share that.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, I'll turn that to Mr. Gaines for, uh, the clarification.
So I'm not aware of a provision that would, uh, be a temporary appointment. The, the appointment would, uh, if the council would, were to choose to make an appointment, that appointment would be for the term, um, and it would be till, what is that? Uh, January second of, of two years from now.
Twenty-two.
So it, it would be until that time, the remainder of approximately two years or until a special election were held. So once that special election was completed, um, that person would either be elected or whoever is elected would take the seat.
Okay. All right, Mr. Sharp?
Rick Sharp, 1623 Birch Street, Cedar Falls. We are given the right to vote under various amendments of the Constitution. The Fifteenth Amendment of the United States Constitution that gave African-American men the right to vote states, "The rights of the citizens of the United States to vote shall not be denied or abridged by the United States or by any state on account of race, color, or previous condension, condition of servitude." The Nineteenth Amendment that gave women the right to vote states, "The right of the citizens of the United States to vote shall not be denied or abridged by the United States or by any state on account of sex." The Twenty-Sixth Amendment, which lowered the voting age to eighteen, states, "The right of the citizens of the United States who are eighteen years of age or older to vote shall not be denied or abridged by the United States or by any state on account of age." The right of the citizens. Think about that for a minute. The right of the citizens. We, the citizens, have a right to vote and decide who our elected representatives are. The cost of an election should not be an excuse to prevent citizens from exercising their right to vote. You, sitting on the council, should not have that right to appoint a permanent person to fill out the rest of this term. You do not represent our voting interests when it comes to appointing people. Again, you do not represent our voting interests when it comes to elect, appointing people. This past election was about change and citizens wanting to be heard. A sitting mayor and a council person was voted out of office. Another known former council person was beat in runoff. That should show you that the citizens wants change and to have a say in selecting their council members. To not allow that to happen is undemocratic. It's bad enough that you suppress the citizens' voices by putting aside money for projects just so you can avoid public referendums. But I ask you to allow democracy to continue and let the citizens exercise their constitutional right to determine who represents them on this council. Do the right thing. Vote to have the open council seat determined by the citizens' choice, decided by a special election.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. Yes, Mr. Dix.
Scott Dix, 7821 North Union Road. I understand, as most people in Cedar Falls do, the election was based a lot around the public safety issue. And by the quick motions here tonight, the existing, existing, uh, members of the council that were from prior to the election have tried to jump on an opportunity to try to appoint what I, what I will greatly predict here, using my best Johnny Carson, Karnack, that it will be a pro-public safety official. We shouldn't take that lightly. It's, I hate to call it a tampering of our system, while it may be legal, it is still trying to put forth in an issue without letting the citizens talk about it and have, have voting with it. I understand that during goal-setting sessions, comments were made that the, that, uh, by people that they didn't believe that, as far as part of public safety, that the citizens had spoke, governed by the number of people that voted. And I ask you, what will you take to make the citizens free? So you will actually represent the citizens of your district? Is it gonna take a petition in each of your districts that you support public safety? A petition signed by individuals, more individuals than voted to put you in office? If that's what it takes, that will be done. We can do that. Will you then represent the people of your district? Because I do not believe tonight you are. And I ask you, Mayor, to use the power that I have not seen here used before. You do possess the power of veto, is my understanding. And by reading the code, it would take a two-thirds, the majority of the council, of which two-thirds would require a five-to-one. It's not two-thirds of what's council's present, it's two-thirds of an entire council. So it would take a five-to-one margin to override your vote. I ask you tonight if they approve this, to appoint that you cast a veto and ask for a veto vote. Thank you.
Any other public speakers for tonight? Yes, Mr. Tyber?
Nick Tyber, 1709 Clay Street. Oh, while the division, it's tough sitting in your seat. I've been there before. And you do have duties, okay? You have responsibilities and obligations. You control the pocketbook. This election may cost twelve thousand dollars. It's more than likely to cost double that because there will be a runoff just given the, the current level of interest. You have the power to appoint. You have the power to call a special election. There are good reasons for the appointment, too. You appoint people every single week almost, or every single council meeting, for planning and zoning, for Cedar Falls utilities. This is one of your duties, okay? There's an urgency factor here. In less than a month, you're going to hold hearings on over eighty million dollars of spending, a forty million dollar operating budget and forty million dollar capital plan. Citizens need a voice. That seat's open. Citizens need a voice. But I do have a, a major issue or major concern and it's election integrity. Election integrity and it's something that nobody's brought up so far. I'm kind of, uh, surprised by it. But the last at-large seat costs the winner over fifteen thousand dollars. Will this election cost over fifteen thousand dollars for the winner alone? Will this election go to the highest bidder? That's a real concern of mine. Who can generate fifteen thousand dollars and then in another eighteen months or so, generate another fifteen thousand dollars to save that seat for the normal election? We have an issue with voter turnout for special elections and for runoff elections. It's down to about fifteen percent. So the people that get out, it's, it's going to be ruled by special interests. Again, it kind of comes back to that, uh, funding mechanism or organizing. There are many groups that we know very well are very, very organized. So I'm really worried about election integrity. Special interest groups, okay? Single-issue voters, yes, they're very, very powerful. Can we have a truly fair election in sixty days? That's my question.
Thank you, Mr. Tyber. Anyone else for a public comment? Okay, then I'll turn it back to council for discussing. Council, go to the rear.
Yeah, I have a question, I guess, Ron, for, um, city business. Um, it sounds like this would probably be quite delayed if we have an election and then we have to have a runoff 'cause it's not decided and it might be June before we have that seat filled. If one of us isn't here, um, or absences, there are votes that require majority votes and supermajority votes. Could we be jeopardizing business of the city by not having someone sitting in that chair?
Mr. Gaines?
I mean, that's a long time.
Yeah, and, and that's a broad question, depending on how many folks would be gone. Uh, most council business is done with, uh, majority of the council, so it would require four. So, but there could be an occasion that does require five or, or more votes. I'm trying to think of a scenario.
Closed session, for instance, requires two-thirds vote.
Or anything that was not passed in PNZ, requires supermajority, zoning issues that.
Is that all? Okay. Counselor Harding?
Um, yeah, I definitely thought about this a lot. And I do see the point of having a seventh person there, definitely. So I asked, uh, Mr. Gaines, how many, four-three votes, just in case, or three-four votes? So we've only had, uh, one, two, three, four, five votes that were four-three in the last four years, three and a half years. And there was only one vote that was four-three. So that's not too, too big of a deal. We also, um, as far as turnout goes, if we piggyback on the, the school election, we'll definitely have a larger turnout. So I would, I would recommend a special election, not only because we can piggyback and save some money, but we would have a larger turnout. And the law, I'm always for a larger turnout. The more people that vote, the better. And, uh, also, we can, it, by appointing, we could technically give someone a disadvantage, actually. If they choose to run, if they're appointed, they could have an advantage or a disadvantage. I would be for an even playing field. And I think that tonight we can set the precedent that we can do what the people want. So we should have a special election.
Thank you, Counselor Harding. Any other question or statements? Yes, Mr. Cruz?
I'd like to comment, um, on the four-to-three vote situation. The quick star vote, I don't know if anybody in here was even involved with that. That was an incredibly contentious discussion. It basically was, uh, three-to-four against it. Then through process, it became a four-to-three. So the significance of a four-to-three vote should not be underestimated. They're, they're very consequential. With that being said, then I want to respond to some of the comments here. We are following state code. I'm assured, Mr. Gaines, Mr. Rogers, has went through the options. Uh, if we do appoint, it doesn't preclude an election. It just, you go through the process, has been stated. Uh, when the election happens, there's no certainty. There's gonna be fifty-plus-one vote, so there'll likely be a runoff, just statistically likelihood. And, um, it, it's just gonna be a drawn-out process. So I firmly believe that we should have somebody in that seat for what could be many months of decision-making that takes place in the city with multiple millions of dollars for other things besides the PSO situation. Thank you.
I think Counselor Cruz. Other que, other.
I just would, uh, agree with Daryl that, um, we're not, by appointing someone, we're not, uh, denying the right to have a vote. You've already indicated, you got the signatures already, so we know the vote's gonna happen. But, um, as you saw here tonight, we talked about a lot of, uh, different issues that require. I did, I did enjoy, uh, there's more dialogue than we've had in a long time. I think that's very healthy for this group. And, uh, as far as, uh, the next several weeks, I know we're gonna have more healthy discussions. I don't want to deny anybody the right to vote, uh, but I, I do want everybody to vote. I feel like the last election, it was, uh, the hard work of one group of people that got all the vote out. But I don't know that necessarily represents the entire city. So, um, knowing that there's still very much a likelihood that there'll be, um, a vote to come, uh, I'm comfortable with, uh, an appointment, temporary.
Counselor Harding?
I'd like to comment.
Counselor Sires?
I do represent the entire city. That was me that represents the entire city now with that last vote. But, but that's not, but, but that's, but that's not why I was gonna talk, anyway. We've gotta have that vote and have it now. And it's going to happen no matter what. So the quicker we can get it done, the better. And we can just go ahead and piggyback it onto the other one, save a little money. And it's not so much the saving the money, we've gotta let the people vote. This is, we're their council. We're the ones they put in here and they have the right to vote. So I'm in favor of the only thing that can happen and that's having a special election.
Yeah, Counselor Harding?
Turnout is, uh, crucial. I agree. I think it should be big turnout. The biggest turnout we can possibly have will be piggybacking with the school board. The two, like, a school board election and a city election, it, it's gonna be a much larger turnout. You'll have much less worry on that day of, you know, one group influencing one way or another than if you, if you appoint and then we can't get that, then you're definitely gonna have less turnout, the second one. So I'm, I'm, and then the other thing is, is, uh, I, I, I thought, again, I thought about it long and hard 'cause it's not just about the one issue. It's not just about the, the PSO thing at all. Because it can be important to have that seventh person. I, I definitely can see that. There's a lot of situations. And I respect Counselor Cruz on saying that four-three can be vital. And you're right, it could be, 'cause a three-three is, is fails. But at the same time, I think, uh, there's also something to be said for just setting a, a precedent of what the general people want. And the, the general consensus of every single person I've talked to, minus people who have already put in that they want appointed, and not one person has told me that I've talked to about this outside friends, family, neighbors, that they want an, an appointment. Everybody that I've talked to, and I talked to a lot of people, ask my wife, everybody has said they want the special election. They want to decide, they want it to be as quick as it can. They want the special election. So I think by denying the special election at this point, uh, we, we will have it, of course. We, we have the best, the best election is gonna be March third. That's the biggest turnout. So I would, I would urge you to really think about, uh, about setting that precedent for representing the people and having the election on the third.
Thank you, Counselor Harding. Yes, Counselor Cruz?
Yes, thank you. I guess I can appreciate everybody's comments. But, uh, one thing I did hear, actually from Mr. Harding during the, um, uh, goal-setting session is when he talked to the public, he said so many people didn't understand the pros and the cons of the PSO situation. And.
Yeah, yeah, you're right.
So I think the biggest thing that'll generate turnout is properly educating the public on the pros and cons, the nuances of how it's working, why it's saving money. Get rid of the fear-mongering that was done extensively, I feel. And I look forward to have opportunity for the staff or the council members to present, um, statistical evidence, proper evidence of why, uh, the PSO program would be beneficial for the community. And then you'll see a turnout based on the actual concern for or against the PSO program. This idea that we gotta hurry up and do it, I don't buy that. We, it, it's gonna be because the public is more educated to know what's going on and where the savings are or not. So I'm, as I mentioned, for the appointment, to fill the spot, to cover city business for what probably will be a double election cycle.
Okay, thank you. Any final comments? Then what we have on the floor is passing, excuse me, uh, resolution approving and filing the city council at-large seat vacancy by appointment, directing publication of notice of the same and establishing and the application filing deadline and date of appointment. This requires a roll-call vote.
Four voting aye, two voting nay, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ayes have it. And, uh, looking at, uh, next item being bills and payroll, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve bills and payroll?
So move.
Is the motion seconded? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do we need, excuse me, excuse me, do we need a roll-call vote on this? Okay, this requires a roll-call vote. I apologize.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Do we have any council referrals tonight?
It's not a council referral.
Then, then I can't entertain it. It must be a council referral.
Okay.
Are there any city council updates?
Maybe I can, maybe I can jump in here, then. I went out to the North Cedar School, is what I was gonna say. And they, it's very nice. It's very nice. But what got passed over was Mark Miller and I want to thank him for the things that he did out there and for the things that I know he does out in North Cedar. And when I had to sit through there and see him passed over and not thanked, I just want to thank him now, because when we were at goal-setting, he made sure and, and I was with him a hundred percent. He wanted new equipment out there and I know he works hard for that area and I just want to thank him for that. That's all.
I second that as well.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate that.
And that's a good point, uh, for council updates. I'd always had a question of what that meant, like what were we supposed to do during council updates? So, thank you for, for sort of pointing the way of being able to.
Thank your fellow council people, I guess.
And, and other people, too. Anything else for council updates tonight? All right, so, uh, this would open us up to public forum. And speakers will have up to one opportunity for up to five minutes on topics, uh, germane, which is immediately relevant to city business. Um, I'm, I'm gonna make a small change tonight from in the past. I, I want to encourage people to be able to speak and not feel like they're cut. I, I want to encourage people to be able to speak and not feel like they're cut off at the five-minute point, so they rush through with their last 30 seconds remaining. So, what I'm going to do tonight, and I'll experiment probably the next few weeks, is I've, I've said that I will call 30 seconds when you're at your, nearly your five-minute point, and council has the ability, by our, our rules, to allow additional time. So, I'll just ask a council member to say seven minutes. You don't need permission, just, just say out seven minutes, once we're at the 30-second point, and that will give the speakers up to seven minutes to talk, total. So, we'll try it out. I just want to make sure we have those comments. Yes, Councilor?
Mr. Mayor, can we hear from our UNI liaison?
Certainly. So, before we go to public comment, that's fine, I didn't realize that we had something for tonight. So, yes, do you have anything for tonight?
I do not have anything specific for tonight, because the school is not in session yet, but we will all be back on campus on Monday.
Thank you, welcome back, good luck.
Thank you.
Now, I'll open it up. Yes?
Clarification, then, when we choose seven minutes, that's an automatic two more minutes?
It's an automatic two more minutes.
Not a vote by the council to approve the two more minutes?
As, as I understand the rules, admin rule number seven, it allows for council to grant additional time. It doesn't require a, a majority or anything, it's just a, I read that as a council...
Okay, because in the past, we had to have council approval to approve more minutes. But, I like your version better.
Oh, that's good, all right. So, we'll do that, and we'll see how it works. I'm an experimenter. Yes, so, we'll start with Ms. Smith.
If you want me to introduce myself again, I can. I do want to, it's Whitney Smith, I live on Neola Street. I want to remind Mr. Sires that you did have something you wanted to...
I'll ask that you address the chair.
Oh, I'm sorry. Earlier in the council meeting, he did mention that he wants to have a voice, or he thinks council should have a voice on who is appointed chief, or hired as chief of police and fire. So, I'd like to remind you that, that he would like that put on as a council referral. I am tired of being called a fear monger. I'm sorry, guys, but I come from a fire family, I talk to firemen, we have a lot of fire friends, and I don't go out and lie to people. I go out and tell them what I know from experienced people. None of you guys, the, before the election people, we'll put it that way, have listened to the firefighters. They're telling you this is dangerous, and you're saying you guys are liars. You don't want to go along with this program. And we spoke. Mr. Burr, you, I'm sorry, War II would have lost her seat had she not had access to the Western home communities.
That's not true, and I don't appreciate that.
I'll ask you not to, to speak back in.
Well, I don't appreciate them lying. That's not, that's what the problem is.
This is public comment.
I have a voice. I'm tired of being shut up. You guys are here to represent us. We all just came up here and told you we want a voice. You say, oh, well, you guys are going to get out there, because you're so organized. I had no clue what I was doing. I worked my butt off to educate people, to knock on doors and say, get out and vote. Your voice is important, I don't care who you vote for, know the causes, know the stuff behind it, and go out and vote. I will tell you, you can ask people, I knocked on doors, too. I said, you know what? I'd like you to vote for this person, this is the other person who's running, you make your choice. But, these are where they stand on them. I have not lied to a single person. I care about this community, I'm born and raised here, my dad is buried here, and I feel like I am rooted and I'm not leaving. I'm asking you to listen to us, we're people. You are supposed to be our voice. You, the four of you who voted yes to an appointment, how many people came up and spoke and said, we want to vote? We don't want you to appoint somebody. We don't want you to choose somebody like Mr. Tiber, who's just going to decide what you guys want, and it's going to be a four-two vote, you're going to put him or somebody else just like him in there. We deserve a voice. And you guys cannot speak for what all of us who will turn out for this vote will say. That's not fair. I am, I am just sick of it. And, you know, I'm going to be a thorn in your side for the rest of your terms, I'm going to work my butt off to get each and every one of you out of here. I'm sorry, but the people deserve a voice. Whether or not I agree with your policies is a different thing, but when your, your people you represent come up and say, I want you to be my voice for this, and you say, I'm sorry, I don't agree with you, so I'm not going to represent you, that's bull. I'm sorry, but who are you guys to do that? One of the things that she said, the lawyer who spoke earlier tonight, she said that you guys are required to be open-minded. How many of you are open-minded about the PSO program? How many of you are open-minded to having a public forum where experts on fire safety can come in and speak and tell you why this is dangerous? I'd like you all to reach out to Mr. Troka. He'll tell you how stupid this is, how dangerous it is. I'm sorry, but that man came in and he turned the city of Waterloo around. Crime is down. His, the people who he was under, or who were under him, respect him. He did an astounding job. And that's Waterloo. I'm sorry, but I don't want to sound like, like an uppity person, but people from Waterloo say that us, us here in Cedar Falls are stingy. But honestly, things are looking really good over there, and I'm not going to lie that I've considered moving because of this crap. I don't want my house to burn up. I don't light candles anymore. I don't use my fireplace anymore, because I don't know what kind of response I'm going to get. I don't know if people are going to be able to come in and get my kids out of the house. That's what's important to me, and I want you guys to listen. I'm just sick of this. Seriously, that's, that's it. I just, just listen.
Thank you. I'll allow council to respond now, if desired. Yes, Councilor Devereux?
Well, I'd like to reply that I guess I was accused of, of doing something illegal on a, on a weekend that I wasn't even in the state of Iowa, not alone in Cedar Falls. So, when you state that you saw me and you have witnesses that saw me, you might want to know that, that I was...
You have, you have no right to say...
Yeah, I just wanted to point out, I wasn't even in the state of Iowa. And when they talked about family, my brother is a fireman.
Thank you. Councilor Cruz?
I'd like to point out that there are 40,000 people in the community, and I hear from other people besides the couple dozen that are here. So, I feel comfortable with the fact that we're going, the process we are, that there can be an election, and you'll have your opportunity to get out the vote. But, in the meantime, we'll have the opportunity to clarify the program and the pros and cons, like I said earlier.
Next speaker, Ms. Sol.
Lee Anne Sol, 1825 Green Hill Road. And the council has spoken tonight, and I think we should be able to work through the process. I do like what I saw tonight in that there was more interaction between council members and staff, and I do appreciate that interaction. I know it can make for long meetings, but some things do need to be clarified and not just up or down votes. So, I do appreciate the questions and the interaction. So, we look forward to an appointment and a special election. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Solentik?
Tracy Solentik, 1008 Rockland Street. It was mentioned earlier, and I didn't get a chance to get up here and talk, that the director, Public Safety Director, is looking at retirement. And what does that look for, for that position after he retires, and would that position be eliminated? And then, with Chief Birdy, or with Officer Birdy, if he doesn't get elect or get appointed or whatever, hired for that job, but he's in that job right now, and he, what, what happens to that position if somebody else gets hired for it? And does he continue to get that same pay? Or if he goes back down to a regular officer, is he going to get that regular officer pay? That's important for us to know, too. And then, also, this is a separate side subject, I think more for Stephanie, I'm sorry. But, has anything been done to, maybe for Mark, to about the flooding in North Cedar for the Farmfield runoff? I know that that was supposed to be addressed in November. We had a flooding back in November that flooded our basement for the very first time, and I know they were going to address something about that, so, or I'm sorry, in March, it's corrected by my son. So, two different things, so, that wouldn't be helpful if something was resolved about that, too. Thanks.
Okay. And, and at this point, in, in the past, typically, it's been given to council to then ask staff for, for clarification. And, and things that come up in public comment, we might have that information. I would like to make sure that we get that, that back to you. I'll open it up, if staff has, has comment on it, on those topics.
Yeah, I can address the, the flooding issue in, in Northern Cedar Falls. If council recalls, that was part of the, the goal-setting packet, and it was decided to move that to a future work session. And I believe on the February 3rd meeting, that we will be bringing that forward to discuss options that could be a potential up there and the, the cost associated with, with those options.
Okay, thank you. And, and there were a few other items that had been brought up as well. Would staff care to comment now? Mr. Torlson?
Certainly. So, typically, what we've done in the past is if we've had a position, such as an assistant chief position, that was eliminated, we would freeze the pay until, you know, if they reverted back to a captain, we'd freeze the pay until they established that captain's pay, something of that sort, is what we've done. I can only, first of all, I'm not retiring yet, so I'm, I'm just saying that. But, it, it doesn't mean, I mean, in, in the history of the Public Safety Department, we've had a director for a long time, even we had completely separate police and fire. You know, that's a decision that, that the, you know, the council would have to make, but I mean, we, we still may want to maintain that, that position as well.
Thank you. Any other speakers for public comment? Yes, Mr. Fry?
Just a couple things. Thomas Fry, 1319 Austin Way. I find it very disrespectful to be told voter turnout is low, therefore, it's not really representative of what the people have said. What is the voice of the people if it's not the vote? The benefit, voter turnout is, traditionally benefits the incumbent. Unfortunately, for some people, it didn't benefit. We have a new changing of the mayor and new outlargement. How disrespectful to them to say, well, it's not really what the people wanted, because voter turnout was low. I take that a little bit personally, because that is the voice of the people, is the vote. So, to say, well, sorry, or you fear mongers went out and got people to the election, that's, that's what happened. Moving on, we want to take the next, we know there's going to be a special election. Okay, we figured that out. We've, we're going to lose our March deadline, and that's going to cost us more money. We're, we're going to have a runoff if more than two people are running and somebody doesn't get 50-plus-one. So, now, we're putting that off even farther, so we're just kicking the can down the road. But, what the city wants, and they've, and they proclaimed it sitting up here tonight, is we want a chance to educate the people on what we think the number-one issue is going to be. Why are we waiting until a special election happens to start educating people on facts? I feel like the reason why that's going to be a big push, because I got a $9,000 currency in the mail, special edition, still have it, is because we're scared of what just happened. We're scared that the people came out and said, hey, this is what we want, oh, voter turnout, let's take the next six to nine months, however long it's going to take, now we're going to start educating people on facts. That should have been done years ago, in 2015, when this thing was first getting going, but we wouldn't have had to educate anybody if the election would have gone a different way. That's what I just heard. Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Winberg? Do you wish to speak?
Jess Whittenburg, 4319 Wynwood Drive in Cedar Falls. I was going to give kind of morale and get excited about what's going to end up happening, hopefully come together, and maybe I put to my winds my sails, I guess. But, anyways, I would like to congratulate Mayor Green and the two new city council members. And we have been told time and time again, when we come up here, we didn't vote personally. It's not personal. And so, what I am asking is for, is I know the votes have split, and I don't want to see, I want to see you guys set an example, don't vote personal, like you've told us, well, don't speak personal. And I think tonight has really shown that that is how it's gone. And one more thing, on a personal note, the people that canvassed and walked around this town to talk about candidacy, the problems we're having in this town, we did that on our own accord. We did not lie. I did not lie. I did not say anything negative about the other candidates. I only said what I know as an experienced, I've been on a council, I've been, like I've said, I've been on two different departments, and I've only brought my experience to when I spoke to people. And if other, and we did not, the, the group did not just get the votes. People realized what's going on. And so, if the people that, the candidates that didn't get in, they should have rounded up their friends and talked and got their own canvassing group to come and help them out. And I don't think it was just one group that went out there and they preached. Sorry, thank you.
Thank you. And I will ask for council, if there's any comments for Ms. Whittenburg's or Mr. Fry's statement, I forgot to ask earlier. So, now, we'll move forward, then. Is Mr. Sharp?
Rick Sharp, 1623 Burt Street, Cedar Falls. So, yeah, it's kind of disappointing to hear the lack of voter turnout. That's been going on for years in this town. It's been, we've had a little voter turnout across this country, and it's a shame. It's one of our rights that nobody takes advantage of, and they get restricted, you know, across the country through various laws or whatever. But, we should do what we can to encourage more voter turnout, and I think what we've seen nationally and now locally, is people are just disenfranchised voters. Our politicians, our elected officials, aren't listening to us, and so, why should I go out and vote? Because they're going to go ahead and do what they're going to do, anyway. That could be a reason why people aren't turning out to vote, just because they're just disenfranchised with this stuff. On my second subject, yes, I agree, we should have a town hall meeting, bring the, to talk about the PSO program, but have the employees involved, too. Because both sides, apparently, they're accusing each other of making misleading statements, misinformation, so let's put it all out there on the table for the public to hear. You, the, what each side can make, saying, well, you're wrong saying this, and you're wrong saying this, and then you can hear each other have, you know, make their reasoning, sound judgments, why we're saying that statement or why you're saying that statement. So, yes, I agree, we should have a town hall meeting. We had it way back when under J. Cole, and that was a lot of drama back then, if you're around for that. So, I agree, let's have a town hall meeting, both sides are there, and let's have it all play out. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. Any comments for premium speaker? Next, so, Mr. Smith, please. If you come up to the podium, sir. It's our name and address for the record, please.
Stan Smith, again. You need a repeat of where I live?
Yes, sir, please.
3221 Pleasant Drive.
Thank you.
What you people did is causing a lot of gray-haired people like me to fear repeat of 1960s and the 1970s. In 1969, I came across the city council in relation to paving my street. I did not care for the way I got treated when I objected, so I started asking questions. Now, if I mention a name, they're dead. You can't get at them. I was talking to Bob Mitzi, who ran cleaner downtown. Bob told me something interesting. He said, you know that every member of the city council and all the boards and commissions are members of Beaver Hills Country Club and/or both, the city, the Chamber of Commerce? I investigated, I found out that was true. Then, a guy I worked with, George Kimball, who had been a city councilman, told me how they perpetuated themselves. They came around midterm for him, and George, you're going to run again? No, I don't think I will. Well, why don't you resign halfway through your term, and we will appoint somebody to take their place? So, when I got done arguing with that city council, I was arguing with an appointed mayor and seven appointed council people. We had to take care of that. We did. Took four years into the 70s to get them all out of there, but we did. But, we didn't like having to do it, and you just put us on that path. We don't want to see that again.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Any... Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any comments for previous speaker? Okay, next, yes, sir. In the back, Mr. Reider?
Paul Reider. They haven't called me doctor for quite a while, so. I retired 10 years ago, so. Paul Reider, 3422 Clearview Drive. I want to commend all of you for what you've gone through tonight. It brings back a lot of memories. I sat there for two terms, and I know that we had the public safety issue come up back in 1999. And what's interesting to me is that history seems to repeat itself. I would hope that people who wanted to solve this problem, I commend Rob Green for at least looking at the possibility of, you know, how can we deal with this issue so that you get the best outcome for everybody? And I can sympathize and respect the opinions of people who have spoken here, who do not want to see the, the public safety together and want it separated. But there's some real issues that need to be decided, and they need to be decided in terms of, of the economics and the safety issues. And I think that a good discussion can be had with that, and I think you're, you're planning on doing that. That's what I was in favor of back 20 years ago. But there wasn't any interest, it seemed to be, in terms of what goes on in the election, for people to kind of sit down and figure that out. So I'm really hopeful. This is a wonderful city. It's amazing to be able to serve on the city council, and I know how that goes. And I, I gather there's a rapport, I haven't been here for a while. There's a rapport that develops between people who disagree with one another, and I don't think people can appreciate that, that there's really a necessary need for people on the council to respect one another, and it's obvious that you're going to do that. And I would hope that people in the audience would, would at least have some respect for you, to know that you, you've been elected. And in terms of appointing somebody, you can appoint somebody who, you know, you were elected, so you represent people. And there are some candidates who are going to be considered, who have served on the council before. They've been elected. So I think it's important to, to, to do the business of the city. You really need to do what you're doing, but, and I'm hopeful that, that the outcome of this whole thing will be good for the city, because this is a wonderful city, and we should all try to get along and not be so upset about things. And I, so I commend you for a good job tonight, Rob. I think you're going to be just fine. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reider. And, and I'd like to say also, thank you to Mr. Smith and Mr. Reider for your council service and for your perspective tonight, especially. Other public speakers? Yes, sir, Dr. Flory.
Ron Flory, 301 Spruce Hills Drive. I would like to echo what several people have also already stated in the open forum, and to congratulate Rob for helping understand the issues better, questions back and forth among the council members that seem to be much more in-depth than what we've heard previously. And is it appropriate for those who agree that we could give you a round of applause?
Sadly, no. Next speaker. Yes, Ms. Pop. And I'll just say, too, I'll, I'll use professional titles always and call people by last names, not, not to distance myself, but because I really respect what you've accomplished. So let me know if I call you the wrong thing. It's Ms. Pop.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Again, I want to echo what everyone else has said here tonight. You've done a great job with your first meeting, and thanks for being patient with us. I also want to thank all the public who showed up tonight. Last year this time, it was council, staff, and me in a 21-minute meeting to talk about the CIP a wee bit. And the next meeting in January, I believe, was 14 minutes, where we passed our budget. We had seven people on the council, and it was council, staff, and me that sat through it. We should be very appreciative of all the folks that are standing behind me, that are taking an interest and will be witnessing some very important things that happen in these chambers. So it's nice to have a wee bit of company on this side of the dice. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Pop. Other speakers? Yes, Mr. Salentik.
Jeremy Salentik, 1008 Rockland Street. I know I'm going to forget everything I want to say, because I didn't write it down. Going back to the benefit issue with the insurance, you have a retired employee that turned 65, and the stopgap doesn't cover him. But what about their spouse? They've got somebody that's 60 with a pre-existing condition, and the insurance is covering them. What happens to them? They're not eligible for Medicare, and no other insurance out there is going to cover them for the next five years. So what do we do about that? Now, obviously, most of you know that we suffered a house fire in May of 2017, and on May 15th of 2017, I came to my first city council meeting. And up until that point, I did not care about city business. I was like most of the other people out there. Ah, let some other buddy, some other person vote on it. Ah, they know what's, they know what's good for the city. But after coming to that first city council meeting, that's when I decided to get involved in this stuff. So here's my comment about low voter turnout. If it matters to this public, the public in this city, they need to come out and vote, because it is, when you vote, it's the majority. And if it's only 10% of the major, of the city, too bad. It's the majority. If it's important, you get your butt out there and vote. If you don't agree with what I'm voting for, get out there and vote. Because it is important. It is your right, and it is your duty for your citizens to get out there and vote. Not everybody agrees with, you know, the PSO program, and there's people that do. Get out there and vote. Why is it only the people that are against the PSO program are getting out there and vote? If there's other citizens out there that care about it, then they need to get out there and voice their opinion, too.
Thank you, Mr. Salentik. Previous comment?
Can we have staff address the stopgap question?
Certainly.
Insurance question?
Ms. Reuter, back?
Well, I don't really probably want to address it just off the top of my head. I mean, obviously, health insurance is complicated in terms of COBRA rights and retiree rights. So that is something, I guess my preference would be, is that we follow up...
Certainly.
...and have a accurate response to what that would be.
Excellent.
Will you respond directly to Mr. Salentik, or get it to me, and I can respond to him?
Sure, sure, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Could we have that research distributed to the whole council and have a discussion?
Well, we wouldn't be able to have a discussion unless it was in a meeting format.
I'll do, I'll do a referral when it's appropriate to do that.
Certainly. But that's, that's a great idea. If we could, for the information, if that can come to all councils, just use the council@cedarfalls.com. Then we all have access to it, and then if needed, we can bring up a referral. I think that'd be the most appropriate way forward. So, any other public comments? You're not, you're not, we can't do a public, I'm sorry. Yes, so no other public comment?
Can I make a remark? Or no?
What's that?
Can I make a remark?
Yes.
In general, to...
We're still speaking to previous comment, so.
Sure. I recall, I guess it'd be about two and a half years ago when we had the League of Women's Voters debate, and the question came to me about the, what I thought about the PSO program. And my response was that I would critique it, and if I see there's any adjustments needed, that I would look into that. And that's how I follow everything I do as a financial planner. I'm a statistical analysis business planner. I've done it for 30-plus years. I also said that I don't rubber stamp city staff recommendations, and they know that. They've known me for a long time. I've been in town for a long time. So if you can prove to me and show to me that something is wrong, I will listen and go from there. So that's the way I do, what I do as a financial planner, and you don't survive in my business for 34 years without having accurate information. So, and giving clients accurate advice.
Excellent.
Thank you.
And so with that, yes, please, Ms...
One more comment, please. And Darrell, you and I will be talking about, you know, our differences. But I'll, I'll show you the right way. Here's what I wanted to comment on. I love that everybody comes here, because the more people that are involved, the better our city will become, and it's the greatest community on earth, as far as I'm concerned. But one thing, before we, we like to call it scrapping in my family. I, I got three kids, and they're all very competitive. But before we scrap, we all, I want us to all know we're all on the same team. And what I proposed to them, what I proposed to the mayor was if we started maybe with the Pledge of Allegiance before every meeting, I know a lot of communities do that, the Pledge of Allegiance, so we knew we were all on the same page and on the same team. I, I think that would be great. And if we could have a, since, since we're blessed with you and I, or the high school have a singer come in and sing, oh, whatever the choice is, "God Bless America," or something like that to start us all out, so we know we're all on the same page and we know we're all Americans. I think that would be great. That's all. I just wanted to put that out there. And also, if I, if you want me to go on, I can. I think we should have committees, and there should be three people, just like we had, this is about 1979. We had seven committees, and one council person headed each committee, and there were three council people on each committee. And that way, they could look into the things of the different issues, and the representatives could help decide through these committees what was going to happen, and then recommend it to the rest of the council people. And that was just another one of my thoughts.
Right, thank you.
So that's all. Thank you very much, and thank you, everybody, for coming.
And I will just say thanks to all for the respectful and thoughtful dialogue tonight. It's, it's a team effort. It's not just city council and staff, but it's the residents of Cedar Falls as well. So thank you for being here tonight. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion has it. We're adjourned. Thank you very much.